And state to pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing here, one nation under God, in the God of liberty, justice, and
If my voice holds out, we'll be okay. First, the announcement, Fishers Care. Todd?
Yeah, thank you, President Block. It's exciting. The city of Fishers on a number of levels. They've been really proud of the work that Mayor Fadness has done and led. From 2015, make a moment sworn into office, kind of championed mental health initiative that has really created an environment within our community that's brought people together. Basically, the mental health initiative has been to try to remove the stigma around depression, anxiety, and suicidal thoughts, and that permeates throughout our society. And so with that, one of the things that really was a champion part and what I know Mayor Fadness, I know myself, several people, most of the council, I think, have been involved at some point or other, is that we don't want this to become a legacy based on politics, or based on administration, or government, but based on grassroots in the community really coming together to reach out to one another and be there for each other. So I'm excited to announce that during this past few years, we've been bringing together interfaith groups, so diverse group of faith leaders in our community, and it also actually attracted business leaders in our community. They want to give back. And so what's going to be launched here this week is called Fishers Cares. So you'll see that, we'll have a press release that will go out in a day or so. And on stigmafreefishers.com is the website where there's a lot of information, a lot of resources for people that are looking for assistance with regard to maybe they're in distress, they don't know what to do, maybe there's a family member in distress, and they're just kind of disoriented at the moment, they want to figure out where they can go. One of the first lines of defense always for us is just finding somebody we can talk to. So it may not be a 911 situation, but say somebody just lost their job, maybe somebody has a relational issue, maybe there's something that's just triggered a moment where they feel like they just have to talk to somebody. And I believe more than ever, we've become a society isolated from one another, especially with social media, especially with the devices that our kids carry around, that we carry around. We've become siloed off in our own little world, and we view the world differently now, and it's not as relational. So this helps break down a little bit of the relational piece. So with Fishers Cares, there are going to be six or seven locations. The website's already up, so if you go to stigmafreefishers.com, and you go to the adult section, there's a tab there for Fishers Cares. It takes you off to a different site that's off of the city website. So it is a separate grassroots effort by the community, not by the government. And what it is are pastors, laypeople, and faith leaders, and also business owners that want to take and give back their time. You can actually schedule an appointment at Fishers YMCA. You can schedule an appointment at Sunrise Cafe, at Pennheads, and at a couple different religious faith buildings in our community. And it's a pilot program. We are, just by talking about it, we've already had more interest from different businesses that wanted to say, hey, here's a free cup of coffee, sit down, relax, there'll be someone here to talk to you. They're not licensed counselors, they're not there to provide 911 assistance. Obviously, they can get you that, they can call 911 and help. But this will be a thing. So they'll be able to go in and actually schedule, or you'll see times that they're available, they can just drop in and just say, hey, there's somebody I can talk to. There will also be stations in some of these places where you can go in and just sit down for a minute and just chill out and just relax. And I think that sometimes that's what we need in our society to get away from maybe the stress moment. So really excited about this. There'll be a lot more information that will be released here this week and next week. Couple of news organizations want to talk about this and really, really excited. The biggest part is, it's the community embracing this, and this is something that can hopefully sustain itself in the community fabric, regardless of who's sitting here, who the mayor is, whatever administration's around. It's something that's ingrained in Fishers. So that's.
Great, thank you, Todd. That sounds like a terrific initiative. We have two proclamations. The first one is the Gold Star Mothers proclamation, and David's going to read that.
Thank you very much. Actually, Todd, you were talking about a couple of things right there, and it made me think, and I'd just like to go and separate for a second and talk about something that is along the lines of that. But it is with Gold Star Mothers, I'm going to read this proclamation, but it's really about Gold Star families. And most of the people that know me well know that one thing I'm involved with is I'm a part of a sailboat team, and for the last 16 years, I go to New England, and we compete in a sailboat race, but we welcome wounded warriors to go with us. They come, we train, and then we compete side by side. But what we do locally is at the Indianapolis Sailing Club, we also have, on different nights, we have little races here, and service members can come and they can work with us and compete. But then also after that, that's really where the camaraderie comes in, is after that, there's a deck up on top, and they can come and talk and work things that they need to. Some of our service members, they come, they're trained for certain topics when they were in the military, and when they get out, they don't have that release, which is very similar to what Todd was just talking about. And I've had some that have called me over the years, and I won't give names, but they just said that I was in a certain situation, and I just needed a little bit of help. So we've welcomed them locally, then also we do that nationally. It's called Operation Set Sail. So if anything interests you with that topic, or just to learn how to sail and kind of work with some of our service members, just send me an email, and I'll put you in touch with the right people. So without further ado, I'm going to read the Gold Star Mothers, but it's a little different. It's Gold Star Families now. Whereas on June 23, 1936, the US Congress passed a joint congressional resolution that designated the last Sunday in September as Gold Star Mothers' Day. And whereas the history of Gold Star Mothers dates back to World War I, when it became the custom of military families to hang a service flag near their front window, these flags featured a blue star for each family member actively serving in the US Armed Forces. And the Gold Star flag first appeared when mothers who lost sons in the war sold gold stars over the blue stars. And whereas the city of Fishers recognizes the Gold Star on a service flag as a symbol of those soldiers who have fallen in the line of duty protecting our freedom. And whereas we honor those members of our community who have lost a son or daughter, making the ultimate sacrifice and service to our country. And whereas on this day, we remember our commitment to Gold Star Mothers and their families who carry on with pride and courage despite suffering the tragic loss. Therefore, I, Scott Fadness, Mayor of the City of Fishers, do hereby proclaim September 29, 2019, as Gold Star Mothers' Day, and the city of Fishers and all residents are encouraged to celebrate it.
That's great. Thank you, David. And thank you for making it personal as well. I know you give a lot of time to it. The next proclamation is the Make-A-Wish Day proclamation, and Cecilia's going to read that.
Right. So I'm going to read the Make-A-Wish proclamation. Whereas October 18 celebrates Make-A-Wish Ohio, Kentucky, and Indiana, granting its 17,000 wish, the day that Kami Heinrich's wish for a friendship swing to be placed in Roy G. Holland Memorial Park came true. And whereas Make-A-Wish grants life-changing wishes to children battling critical illnesses. And whereas, when a wish is granted, a child's fear, a child replaces fear with confidence, sadness, with joy, and anxiety with hope. And whereas wishes give children strength to fight their illnesses, Make-A-Wish makes a wish a necessary part of a child's overall medical treatment plan. Therefore, I, Scott Fadness, Mayor of the City of Fishers, do hereby proclaim October 18, 2019, as Make-A-Wish Day in the City of Fishers, and all residents are encouraged to celebrate it. Signed, this 10th day of October 2019, Scott Fadness, Mayor, City of Fishers. It was really exciting this past Friday that a wish was granted at Holland Park, and I was not able to attend, but I was wondering if Scott, if you could share just a little bit about that day. It was wonderful, and it was a great day of celebration here in Fishers.
Yeah, it was an extraordinary afternoon. The Parks and Recreation Department worked with Make-A-Wish Foundation, as well as Kami and her family. Kami's a 16-year-old young lady with some disabilities, and she had the opportunity to make any, have one wish granted, any wish that she would like. And this young, extraordinary woman decided that her wish would be to put something in a park that other kids could enjoy, and ended up putting in a swing that would allow children and adults of all abilities to be able to really enjoy the playground like any other well-abled person would be able to. And I just have to tell you, meeting that young woman, meeting her family, there are a lot of different people there, it was extraordinary. And she had so much joy watching other people enjoy that new swing in our park. So it was a great way to end the week.
Thank you, Scott, and Cecilia for that. Next is the presentations, 35th anniversary to Office Works.
This is a wonderful opportunity to highlight some of our businesses. This is not something that we've done a great deal of, but to be honest with you, there haven't been that many businesses that have celebrated their 35th anniversary here in the city of Fishers, and we certainly hope that there will be more to come. Tonight, we have the opportunity to recognize and celebrate Office Works in their 35th year of being. I think it was October 1 when they celebrated it. Tom O'Neill is an individual that I've had the opportunity to sit down with and chat with, and he's been an active member not only in Fishers, but really in the entire central Indiana area and business community. They've been often ranked as one of the best places to work, and just an extraordinary group of individuals that always strive to give back to the community. And so tonight, we thought it'd be appropriate to wish them well on their 35th year of work. I can honestly say too that their furniture is pretty great. I have their furniture in my office as we speak, and if it can hold me up, it's got to be pretty sturdy. So with that, Tom, I'd like you to come on up and be recognized and maybe say a few words.
Good to see you, Tom. Congratulations on 35 years. Larry, nice to meet you. All right, Mike, yours.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Mayor Fadness, council, thank you all very, very much for this honor. It's been a great run here, and I certainly have enjoyed, obviously, the town of Fishers. Love the atmosphere, love the community feeling, and I'm looking forward to another 35 years. How about that? Thank you all very much.
Hey, Tom, you, hey, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you're also a resident of Fishers? You're a resident of Fishers as well, Tom, right?
No, I'm not.
You're not? You moved on me? Okay, we'll talk later. Okay, there we go, I like that. Pete, oh, annex, yeah. Okay, next, we have some 20-year employee recognition. Who's doing this? Chief?
Thank you, council. I'd like to recognize Lieutenant Darren Emmons. Darren, Darren's here with Felicia's wife. Darren has served our community, protected and served our community for the last 20 years. Before that, he served the Anniston, Alabama, community for six years, and prior to that, he was in the United States Military and the Army. So he's got a long lifetime of service towards communities. In addition, while here at Fishers Police Department, he's done a number of things. Darren's been involved in our K-9 program as a handler, supervisor, and ultimately coordinator. He's also our lead bike specialist and instructor, as well as our FTO coordinator at times when needed. And in 2003, he was promoted to sergeant, and now he serves as a lieutenant over our Traffic and Crime Reduction Unit area. In addition, just two things to note before I get out of your way, is that one is his ability to continue to serve and protect Fishers from the front line. What I mean is he's a 26-year veteran of law enforcement, he's out there every day like it's his first, and I admire that about him. And Darren, I appreciate your 20 years of service, but more importantly, your friendship.
Thank you, Darren, for your service. Who is going to be presenting?
I believe we have Tabitha, our fleet director, is here today to talk about a couple of these next individuals.
Thank you.
Hello.
It is an honor to present these awards to two amazing gentlemen I work with. They have been with the city of Fishers for 20 years now. They are a huge, huge part of why our police and fire department are able to do their jobs. Our Department of Public Works is able to keep our streets and our parks the, some of the best in Indiana. I truly appreciate working with both these gentlemen. It is an honor to give Jerry Eiler and Edwards and Anthony Novak their 20-year service awards.
Thank you, Anthony and Jerry.
If you guys ever want a really bad dad joke, Anthony right there has the best bad dad jokes you'll ever hear in your life.
We may need to hear it. Come on. That's good.
Thank you.
All right, Finance Committee, John?
Thank you, Rich. The Finance Committee met last Wednesday, October 16, and considered the following items that we recommend for approval this evening. In particular, item 6A on the Consent Agenda, request to authorize City Controller to transfer funds. In the item in Budget and Financial, item 8, request we recommend for approval, the 2020 City of Fishers budget. Item 9, resolution approving creation of Pullman Point allocation area. Item 10, resolution approving creation of stations allocation area. And item 11, approve amending ordinance authorizing 2019 lit refunding bonds.
Thank you, John. Next Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Pete, second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I'd like to abstain from 6A.
Jennifer, did you hear that? David is abstaining from 6A. Okay, thank you. Economic Development, none. Moving to Budget and Financial, item 8091619C.
For the record, Lisa Bradford, City Controller. The item before you is the third reading of the City of Fishers 2020 budget and adoption. This budget is the same as was initially presented to the council in September for our public hearing. For your reference, since the last meeting, the PSAP has passed through the county, so we don't need to make any adjustments in our budget related to the PSAP, the Public Safety Access Tax not passing. If there are no questions, I'd ask for approval.
Questions of council?
Rich, I just want to go over a couple of things. I was not able to come to the last meeting. I apologize. I can make most meetings, but that's one I was not able to come to for a work event. I just want to go over a couple of things with, in the past, we've had some big items over the last couple of years with the police station, fire station, 116th Street, State Road 37, DPW, and some other things. This year, there was a big piece in the budget that's, I think, very important, and yes, it does come with some costs. This, I've got 2013 and 2017, and what these documents are, are kind of what I use myself as a council member, and I know staff does, which is staff and the DPW side has gone out, and they review every single road and every single neighborhood and every single street to find out whether, and they put a rating on it, whether it's one to five. One meaning next year, that needs to get repaved. Five years, we've got a little bit of time. And what they do is that takes all the politics out of it, and that takes all of the uncertainty out of it. But it also comes with a known price tag, because also in these, they go through each year, a certain number of items need to get repaved, and they'll put a budget item on it. The first, and I just brought the last two, this has been going on for a while, so I know Scott and I have worked on this probably for 10 years at least. And the reason we started to look at it 10 years ago is the Fishers growth pattern happened about 10 or 15 years ago. And anytime you build a subdivision in a street, and a curb, and a sidewalk, and a ramp, those things about 10 to 15 years down, about five years, you'll need to do something. But 15 to 20 years, you're going to need to do some major maintenance. And when a lot of those things happen at the same time, we just knew that that was going to come down the pike. And about 15 years from now, so that's why we started thinking about it 10 years ago, that was going to start to come due. So at the time, they had about a $2.8 million per year for the first one, and then the second one was about $4 million. And at the time, we were about $500,000 of our resurface fund, and that was not negative, that was not that we weren't thinking. It's that was appropriate for that moment in time in Fishers. Since then, all of those subdivisions that were built have started to age, as we thought, as this document shows, and they've come up. So now our budget is about $4 million for that. Now with that said, we've got some successes, and I'm just naming some subdivisions near me. You guys are the same way too, but the Pines, Roxbury, Berkeley Grove, Berkeley Ridge, Timber Springs, to name a few, have been repaid, but those have been asphalt. We've got another issue, which is, and it's not unique to Fishers, but when you do a concrete street, it lasts even longer. But when it fails, it fails, and there's very limited ways that you can do that. I lived for the first 12 years in Fishers in Connor Creek, which is 116th and Allisonville, and it was a concrete street. And I know that staff came out, DPW, they did some things. And then after a couple of years, it kind of came, well, that, okay, it's starting to look good. But there are some other streets and some other subdivisions. You've got Connor Creek, which I just mentioned, Walnut Creek, Summerfield, and also Burberry. Burberry's a very big one that we've been watching over the last few years. And we've done that in a sense that thinks, Scott, over the last couple of years, you had staff go to different conferences, different sites, different places, so that we could look, how do we do this in the right manner, other than, you know, ripping everything out? Unfortunately, there isn't an easy way to do this. We didn't find a magic solution. So what we did have to do was to put into a budget one year to actually get that replaced. And that year was decided to be now, because you can either go in and do a couple panels, and then a couple years, a couple panels, a couple years, a couple panels. The residents will never see it, and it might even get ahead of you, because if you don't repair, then ones that were next to it that are in good shape, they might not last. So you have a situation where you need to do that. So that expenditure is in the budget, it's a very large expenditure, and there's a couple of other concrete streets that we're doing. But the main thing for the public, I just wanted to share is this is, these documents are things that we use, so when we go out and DPW reviews our streets so that we know when things need to be repaved. And it's not politics, it's all what street, the certain age, and it might need to be done a little bit sooner than others. But that's how we've come up with the different repaving schedules that we've done, and that's how we've come up with this budget for one, that we either do Burberry, and then we don't do other subdivisions for about two years, or we do those subdivisions and we don't do Burberry. And this is one that we just need to kind of get ahead, because that one's been failing for a little bit of time. And the last thing I wanted to mention is, I do not want to mention one subdivision over another, because we're all one community. And it's one of those adages I always see, when there's two people on a boat, and there's a leak on one side, and that person's unrowing it, or getting the leak out, and the other person's saying, well, I'm glad the hole's not on my side. We're all in this together, and whether we live in Burberry or not, it's very important so that we do Burberry, we get it done properly, and then we can do other streets as we've always thought we would over the last couple of years, based on what we're supposed to do. And then the last thing, which is off the subject, but I know Mike's in the audience, but it's also the concrete streets and asphalt streets that are private roads. That, as I understand, that staff is getting close, they're reviewing, and when I say reviewing, they're actually going through and categorizing what is where, and there should be a proposal at the end of the year, or the beginning of next year, to actually get that done too. That's separate from the budget, but I just wanted to mention that. So those are some things. I will be supportive of the budget. It's something that we've worked on for the last, really, 10 years, is to come up with our plan and implement it. But there are some bigger-ticket projects that need to happen. If they don't happen, I don't know how you get them done. Thank you.
Thank you, David. With that, I'm going to go ahead and, I'm going to make a motion to approve, but before I formally do that, I wanted to recognize the mayor, the department heads, the staff, the Finance Committee, for the countless hours that go in to preparing each and every year's budget. Every year's budget is not done on a whim. It's not done kind of pulling numbers out of the hat. It's a very arduous process, and Scott and his team, and John and his Finance Committee team, the hours that have gone through there to make sure all that information is fed down to appropriate people and made public, should be also commended for the effort they did on this budget. And I will go ahead and make the motion to approve our 2020 city budget. All right, motion by Pete to approve, second by Todd. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm sorry, I want to thank Lisa for all her hard work. She is a tremendous controller for the city of Fishers. The work that you do for us, and the time you spend, and the resources you have that you bring to our community are second to none. And I really want to thank you for all your hard work, and your knowledge, and your wisdom, and everything that you do for us every single day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Item 9, R102119A.
If I could, I will just mention 9 and 10 together, because they're procedurally about the same, they're the same process, and then you just put on them separately. But essentially, item 9 is to create an allocation area for Pullman Point, which is essentially the Skinnell project off of Lantern Road. As you recall, earlier this year, we agreed to a project agreement with Skinnell, and in that, there will be a TIF area created for them. And so this is the procedural step to create their TIF area, and this is the same issue that's item number 10, and this is a creation of an allocation area for the stations, which is the third phase over the development near the yard.
There's no comments from council. I'm going to make a motion to approve item 9.
Motion to approve by Pete.
I'll second.
Second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Just as a point of reference, if I'm not mistaken, the Pullman Point area, those bonds will be developer-owned bonds.
Yes, those are conduit debts.
That will not be on our balance sheet.
Those are, no, they are listed as informational, but they're technically not considered the city's debt obligation for.
Just clarifying, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, for Pullman Point.
And then if there's no questions, I'm going to make a motion to approve item 10.
I just want to make a note for the record. I think Jennifer caught it, that David.
David said no.
Yeah, sorry, just to be consistent.
Very good.
Item 10, I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve item 10 by Pete, second by Todd. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay, again, same reason.
Okay, David's a nay, and abstention.
One abstention.
Okay, very good. Motion passes. Item 11.
The item before you, this is simply a procedural. When we were before you, I believe last month, with the ordinance to refund the 2009 COAT bonds, we had it listed as having 125% coverage. And actually, per our policy, we didn't catch in time, it needs to be 150% coverage on that lit bond. So this is just a procedural cleanup item. So if we could suspend the rules and pass that on first reading, so we can go ahead and refinance.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, a motion to suspend the rules by Pete, second by Selena. All in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Selena, second? Motion to approve by Pete, second by Selena. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Item, where was I?
12.
12, thank you. 091619G.
Before Tony gets started, I want to go ahead and thank Larry for some of his podcasts and noting the fact that these are voluntary annexations that don't really require a lot of time. So for those people on the audience that don't understand voluntary annexation, it basically says, hey, I want to come into your city and be taxed by you. Okay, so that's a very cursory review of annexations. So in order to speed up time, I'm going to take these one at a time, since these are third readings for the next three items, correct, Tony?
Correct.
I'm going to make a motion to approve number 12 on the third reading of a voluntary annexation.
Second.
Motion to approve by Pete, second by John. All in favor of approving item 12?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I'll make a motion to approve item 13.
Motion to approve by Pete, second by Todd. All in favor of approving 13?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, Pete.
And then item 14, I'll make a motion to approve, again, the last voluntary annexation, third reading.
All right, motion to approve by Pete, second by Selena. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Sorry, Tony.
No problem. And the next one will be, require a public hearing in first and second reading. This is a two-lot property that's 10.14 acres in the South Central District, and this property was subdivided and platted into two lots recently. And as part of the plating, they were eligible for annexation and have voluntarily agreed to annex. So we're here tonight for the public hearing and first and second reading. So we're here tonight for the public hearing and first and second reading.
Okay, so seeing this is a public hearing, if there are any members of the public who wish to speak, please raise your hand. You'll be asked to come before the mic. You'll be given three minutes in which to speak. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And Pete?
Motion now, first and second reading.
Very good, thank you. Item 16, 102119A.
And this again is another first and second reading and public hearing. This is a one lot, just under a one acre, for 130 First Street, not too far from New Britton Elementary. The property had recently gone through a variance and as part of that, we requested if they would annex. And they've agreed to that. So we're here again for voluntary annexation of this single family home.
So again, this is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? If you'd raise your hand. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
Have first and second reading.
Okay, noted, thank you. 17, yes. Okay, item 17, 102119B.
Good evening. For the record, Megan Schaefer with the Planning and Zoning Department. The item before you is a request to approve an easement and right of way vacation for the Nickel Plate Station's mixed use development. So this project is generally located on the northeast corner of 116th Street and the future Nickel Plate Trail. The first part of the vacation is an ingress, egress and drainage easement, which exists between lots 13 and 14. This is proposed to be vacated to serve the redevelopment project. The second portion of this vacation is the right of way, right of way that's depicted here in this exhibit. This includes portions of JC, Moore Station and North Street. And again, these are requested to be vacated as a part of the new development project. This does require a public hearing. Staff recommends allowing for the combined readings, holding the public hearing and approving the easement and right of way vacation.
I didn't realize it was a public hearing until you said that. Okay, again, this is a public hearing. So if there are members of the public who wish to speak, if you could raise your hand, you'll be asked to come before the mic and state your name and record for the address. Any members wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Questions?
Just make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Pete, second by.
Rich, can you actually make a motion to suspend the rules?
Oh, sorry, thank you.
It wasn't on the list there, Chris. Motion to suspend.
I'll second that.
All right, first and, motion to suspend the rules by Pete, second by John. All in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Now?
I make a motion to approve now that we suspended the rule.
Okay, motion to approve by Pete, second by Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And all abstain from that.
Okay, one, nope, one abstention. David? David? Very good. Item 18, 102119C.
Yeah, this is a final reading of a text amendment to the UDO for signage update. We actually recently updated the UDO in August of this year for substantial changes. Right after we did that, the county had amended their sign standards as it relates to just describing and defining the right of way and clearly stating that no signs are allowed in the public right of way other than some governmental signs for safety reasons or any other governmental purposes. And which our ordinance already prohibited signs in the right of way as well. However, since we have county roads within the city, they're asking for every jurisdiction to adopt that same language so they're uniform across the board. So we've done that. We've just modified these sections to define what the right of way is and what the right of way means and what signs are not allowed and allowed in there. So this is, in our opinion, a minor change, but it's to be consistent with the county so that like Olio Road has the same standards as the rest of the city and other county and city roads. With that, we have Plan Commission have a public hearing and was reviewed and approved by the Plan Commission.
Any requirements here, Chris?
Nope, just final reading.
Did the Plan Commission have any debates or discussions?
Yeah, but we, we covered everything.
Right, I mean, yeah, I think there was no, it came back with an approval, right? So there's no, pretty much sure it was unanimous approval, wasn't it, Tony?
Correct, yeah.
So there's nothing really to note. I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Pete, second by Selena. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Very good. Motion passes. That concludes the regular session, I guess, well, technically, we are on the unfinished or new business. Is there any? No? Seeing none, good. All right, this is item 20, Community Comments. If there are members of the public who wish to make a comment, you can come before us. Mike, if you'll state your name and address for the record. Again, remind you that you have three minutes.
Sure thing. My name is Michael Colby, I live at 7105 Cold Lake Drive, Fishers, 46038. Didn't expect me to come to a meeting without saying something, did you? Actually, I'm just going to, just give you a reminder. Early voting will, will start this week. It'll be starting on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday and Saturday. And then next week, it'll be Wednesday, but not Thursday, that's Halloween, and then Friday and Saturday. And not to offend anybody, but I don't expect a big turnout in this election. So there won't be a big crowd out in your lobby. Saying that, I want to say that I do appreciate the patience that the city staff has with it. Sometimes we get pretty busy up here. 3,000 people a day come through here and I know it's disruptive. I have cookies and I try to keep the kids quiet. That doesn't always work. So if you want more information on times, it's, you can go to the, three minutes. You can go to the County Elections Office and it'll give you the time. But we'll be in this room. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, for working that time too. Any other members? Jocelyn?
Good evening. Jocelyn Vare, 13873 Carolina Court. So tonight, the 2020 city budget was finalized. And the fact is, it did include the fifth consecutive property tax rate increase in five years. It is very reasonable for residents to question the necessity of having to pay more in taxes again. And there is a push and pull of residents wanting to keep taxes as low as possible and the municipality wanting to accomplish and fund things for the residents. So this should be a full conversation that includes prioritizing and planning and listening. The 2020 budget was not a conversation, nor was the outcome beneficial for all residents. The bottom line is, we have to pay more in taxes. And no one likes that, nor should they, no matter what the reason. So in the spirit of moving forward, I would like to submit the following recommendations for the 2021 budget and that public conversation. So what I've heard from residents is they should be able to, they feel that they should be able to expect 30 days before public, 30 days before the public hearing, a clear, straightforward, proposed summary of the budget that is broadcast on all the city channels and submitted to the media like it used to be. And the purpose of that is just making sure residents, as many residents, are as aware as possible. The public presentation should be clear and accurate and facing the residents. The presentation should not include shorthand, my friends, the property tax rate is never 71 cents. It is 71 cents of $100 of assessed value. So just that little nuance, that is the clarity I'm talking about. And any adjustment to the tax rate should be stated clearly. I have heard that there's an interest for a tax summary of a five year, year over year summary comparison for Fishers, not comparison to other cities. Why? We don't live in other cities. We live here. And include the detail of major proposed projects and priorities. The budget itself, residents deserve responsibility and accountability, no surprises. And of course, concrete roads did not deteriorate overnight, as we said. They should have been anticipated and budgeted for within the budget. We would like a statement of next year's projections. So households budget too. So those projections are very valuable. So a balanced budget, responsible debt management, and of course, minimum cash reserves. And of course, no tax increases are what residents expect. So in fact, in 24, 2021, residents will expect the tax, property tax rate to decrease because it has been said that this is a tax rate increase for 2020. That's one year only. So thank you for listening to me. I'm sure we can all agree those expectations are reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members wishing to speak?
Hello, Logan Day. I live at 12812 Milton Road. I just have a few things here, if I can get my screen to come up right. First one's a little bit lighthearted, but it is serious. And it's directed at the mayor. We have a red light out at the crossover intersection of, over I-69, that southeastern five-way. There's a red light out on the eastbound lane and I almost got hit by a car because they didn't see the red light. So if you could pass that on to Eric Pathel, that would be wonderful. Number two, I wanted to make comment to Councilor George and I appreciate the, the explanation that you had given to the road problems and trying to anticipate that. And you had mentioned that no, that it's not really a matter of politics. It's a matter of, you know, looking out and projecting roadways and how those are going to deteriorate over time. I personally don't, I don't know that I ever thought it was a, an issue or a matter of politics. I don't know that others did. The concern is if it, is it a matter of priorities? So I just asked that in the future, is it possible that we start looking at what we know this deterioration rate is going to be on our roads? So that residents, as they start budgeting for the next few years, they understand that realistically, there's going to be a tax increase in this year or the next year as opposed to that coming out in the year. Because if we have this kind of data where we know that after five years, we anticipate the roads being at this level, we should be able to project that out a little bit further. And also prioritizing, you know, we've, we have had some tax increases or discussion of increased expenditures for want type projects as opposed to need type projects. So are we prioritizing those wants and then realizing that the needs put us in a position where we have to raise taxes for those where we could have otherwise allocated differently? So that's a question that I have. The last one, I guess, is for, for the council at large. There had been a discussion or I guess a complaint lodged against our clerk. I guess it was a discrimination complaint. And so I ask, given the conclusion of that investigation, I guess it's my formal request if the council could, if not now, at a next meeting, vote on being able to release a version of that for the public that has all personally identifiable information redacted from it. I used to serve in a capacity of compliance officer for a company and I know that that type of thing is possible and certainly for a government agency. We would like to understand why our duly elected official is, has been stripped of all unnecessary duties because there's certainly some concerns of what some of those mismanagement issues were and why that would justify stripping of duties that were otherwise and for any period of time assigned to that individual. So I'd like you to consider releasing that to the public with all the personally identifiable information redacted.
Thank you, Logan. Wayne?
Wayne McCarg, 10915, 300 yard drive in Fishers. I'm Secretary of the Hamilton Property Association, President of the Persimmon Woods Association. And I basically came to thank you for something you did for us. And that was that in June, we had a contractor for the city come and do some work and they pretty well tore things up. And I documented it at the time in writing. I recorded the meeting we had and I took photographs. And we came to you, Pam Vahl, President, and I came to you and we presented the situation. And in the meantime, Rich had been making calls in our behalf. And that night, the mayor said, let me have that information. I want to work on it. And I'm very happy to tell you that the mayor came up to me at the last meeting and he had worked out basically a 50/50 split. And I know that you folks are too busy to get involved in those kind of things generally. But I just want you to know that we really appreciate it and we're aware of the kindness that you gave us. And Mayor, thank you in particular.
Thank you, Wayne. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak? Seeing none, we will close the community comment.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second by Todd. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.